My default is mute.
Yeah. So I'm just, we're just waiting for everyone else to get on.
Oh, I figured that. Better turn this off. Yeah, I was sitting here trying to do some research on this thing. And finally, about no more than 10 minutes ago, as I was going over it, it dawned on somebody that it might be a good idea to give me the memo that turns out was prepared by you back in November about the issues with this thing. And I went, that could just save me time and then money.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't remember actually doing that.
That's not your, that's, it's not on you. You sent it to them and it just somehow never dawned on him that might have been useful to me. Oops. You know, I've got to wonder after this is over, and you know what I mean? If a lot of this stuff is ever going to go back to the way it was. I mean, this is these type of things right here. I've done so many Board of Revision hearings and other administrative hearings and even court hearings and mediations and things via Zoom that the idea that we're ever going to go back to the days where all the lawyers were required to trek down to the courthouse or go to some meeting or something like that. I gotta wonder if we're ever gonna go back to those.
Yeah, I bet, I bet a lot of it isn't. You know, I bet a lot of it doesn't. You know, look what, look what video conferencing did in the beginning. You know, everyone was having meetings, sitting around a table instead of flying somewhere. You know, now it's even more restricted.
Yeah, I mean, it is. It's, it's something. I know right around here, I'm the only human in my building. Everybody else, one of the attorney, there's one other law office solo practitioner, and that guy went down with COVID. He's coming back in some now, but he's been out for weeks. There is a tell a phone bank type operation that occupies most of the building that's immediately above me. And they have been, this is their second pandemic shutdown because it gets loose. They've been going home. And, uh, and it goes on and on. Right when that thing hit, and I think the pandemic had been on for about two months. And I'm sitting down here in my building all alone one day. And all of a sudden, I decided to go down to the men's room. And when I opened the door, it's flooded everywhere through the ceiling, all that stuff. So I decided, you know what? Before I call the landlord, I'm not so proud. I'm gonna go down and take advantage of the ladies' facilities because needs to be done.
Yeah.
Same story in there, too. And I called the landlord. It turned out nobody's been in here for days over the weekend. And I'm the only one in here now. And until I discovered it, no one knew that a giant storm had ripped a hole in the roof. And from three, three levels of a commercial building, the water had just come cascading down. And wow, oh, talk about, it didn't look like much, but it was six figures worth of damage.
Okay, not quite sure who these people are, but.
I believe this lady is identified as Charisse. And she is the new owner.
Yes, Charisse is on. I do not recognize Carrie.
But I only see two of them.
Okay.
Me and and Ms. Sherfield. That's it.
I have Attorney Tyler Whitney here. I represent Ms. Sherfield.
Thanks. I'm Bill Pittcock. I represent the neighbors. Specifically the Croffords, although there may be more joining later.
Okay. I just kind of got involved, so.
Welcome to the club. If you've just got involved today, you've got a little bit, I've got a little bit less than 48 hours knowledge of. Of this.
I'm Marvin Evans with the, uh, some kind prosecutor's office. And I was asked to, to listen in and provide any input that the trustees might desire. Carrie Jones is actually also with the prosecutor's office. She's a, an intern that we have from the University of Akron. She's in law school there. So she, she has an interest in land use issue. So she's gonna listen in.
Ah, now I see where all the other people are. Here we go. We've got it set up. I see Karen and Carrie and you and Charisse and Tyler and Ms. Ryan and me. And I see I'm the only lawyer here who's still so uptight. I went and pretended like I've been wearing a suit and tie all day. But in fact, I have one behind the door like Clark Kent. And if I, uh, if I stand up, you'll see my jeans.
Right. I, I decided to go the other way. I've got a, I've got a T-shirt and a sweatshirt on, but I have suit pants on.
I was telling, uh, Ms. Ryan, I've got to wonder after this is over. And by that, I mean this pandemic thing. How many of these hearings will continue to be held this, meetings and things like this will be continued to be held this way? How many hearings, mediations, uh, status conferences, pre-trials, Board of Revision hearings, and it goes on and on and on?
Yeah. Well, I mean, now that everybody has the technology and we're getting used to using it. I mean, it's certainly a lot more convenient.
I am, I mean, I'm at the point now where in addition to things like this, I'm actually having evidentiary hearings where witnesses are sworn by a Zoom and, and exhibits are exchanged beforehand and identified. And then we go into the hearings and do it this way. And it is, you know, I can't complain too much yet. Um, with, with the mediations, I'm two for two.
That's pretty good. Yeah. I mean, you know, I've done, we've done several depositions this way and we're gonna do, be doing a few more. And, um, you know, I mean, frankly, I do a lot of work at the Industrial Commission. We don't need, they're, they're not even using Zoom. Frankly, I wish they would start using Zoom, but we've just been doing those hearings over the telephone now for months. And while it's, it's, it's a little bit difficult, it, it certainly still works. So all this stuff does work remotely.
Well, I just remember I had a, a hearing, an in-person hearing in Stowe Municipal Court. And, uh, we actually held it in person with witnesses on the stands and exhibits, et cetera. And after we, of course, had our temperature taken at the door. And we, um, we were in the middle of a hearing and I, we finished it and we won, thank goodness. But all I could think of was everybody's in there in their masks, including the witnesses on the stand. And it reminded me of an old Woody Allen movie where he was confronting someone on the stand who was bound and gagged like Bobby Seal. Only, and while the person to whom he was addressing his comments, who was bound and gag, pardon me, who was not bound and gagged, accused the guy who was bound and gagged of trying to put words in her mouth. Probably the, yes, it was like, you know, you've got to be kidding me. Oh, that's right. He was, he was cross-examining Miss America.
Yeah.
Yeah, the board's not here.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Start, the stars of the show.
Now, Bill, you said you represent Ms. Sherfield and she's the new owner?
No, I represent the neighbors, Ms. Crawford, who is here.
Okay.
Karen.
So it's Tyler, you, you represent Ms. Sherfield?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Bill, what's, what's your client's position, if I may, or if you can?
Opposed to this for obvious reasons.
It being a four unit?
Yeah, I mean, a four unit on a, on a tiny little lot like that in an area where it's been condemned years ago that it's been sold twice since then. Nobody's done anything with it. They started up without any permits. And, you know, just took it from there. Uh, it's on an undersized lot. It's not even big enough, I don't think, for a two-unit place.
I think, I think they tell me it's zoned for a two as far as the land, the lot size.
Well, it was, it's an R3 on which two units are allowed, but you gotta have a minimum lot size. And, um, it's just, you know, we just want to stop this train from rolling. We don't want anybody to argue that we've taken this step and that step and done this and that. And so it would be inequitable to stop us from doing this. I, it's just.
She's, she's gonna rehab and refurb the whole place. Uh, it's not gonna be Section 8. She's gonna be wanting, you know, a thousand to 1,200 a month from each of the four units. She's trying to keep it nice and, and an income property and, and, and I think it may be a benefit to the, the neighborhood. It's, it's gonna, she's putting some serious money into this place to, to bring it up to a, a level that.
She shouldn't have put all that money in without getting this taken care of first.
Well, she had no idea. She had a title company, a title insurance, and then this stuff comes up when she's going to pull permits or, or contractor is.
Well, if it's the standard title company, they've probably got an exclusion.
The, so the issue here is, is whether she can build something new. It was my understanding coming into this that this was a nuisance issue, not, not, not this.
This is it. This is, it's took, I've gotten into this. I wasn't kidding, less than 48 hours ago. And what I understand is.
You've got more than me. I've got about three hours.
Okay, at this point, what they're gonna deal with is whether or not the, um, this board will be dealing with is whether or not to remove the condemnation order.
Oh, okay.
There's another hearing set next week, I believe.
February 10th.
10th, yeah.
In front of whom?
That's for the zoning meeting.
Okay. So, but right now, we've got.
Correct.
But, but this is for whether or not the condemnation order is lifted?
Correct.
I, right, that's.
When I bought the property, I didn't know there was a condemnation order. I was able to get permits and everything from Summit County. They didn't know. I even called them to ask them, how could they give me permits? And they said they didn't know. They said Springfield had the paperwork for the condemnation order, but they never put it in computers where people could see.
Well, the key is this. Even regardless of that, why, the problem is, is that you've got a four unit on an area that's only zone two, and you've lost your pre-existing uh, pre-existing non-conforming use status because it hasn't been used as that for many years. Now, today, we're just going through the condemnation order. That's where this is headed. I don't see what would be the purpose of lifting the condemnation order when somebody has announced they want to do a project that's illegal.
Well, that's, that's, that's to be determined here. So.
That's it.
I mean, if, if Ms. Sherfield just walks away from this, then it's, it's gonna sit. I mean, I don't understand why neighbors wouldn't want it. You know.
Build it up. It's already been sitting for five years.
Yeah.
Not not a four unit.
But it is a four unit. It's a four unit on the property. It's been sitting for five years.
But the thing is, that four unit was built back when it was a much larger parcel. They sold, your predecessor sold off a big chunk of it. And now it's a very much undersized lot, but even so, it's not zoned for four units.
Right, but we're not here for four units. We're trying to lift the condemnation order. We're talking about tearing it down. We're here trying to stop the condemnation, and then we go into zoning.
Okay, are you gonna be tearing it down?
No, that's what we're here to see.
Okay.
I take it the property is vacant?
Correct.
Okay.
Hasn't been for many years.
Okay, I'm sorry. We've, we've got a trustee that's having a little difficulty getting on, so just bear with us here. Sorry.
That's okay. The first time I tried to do one of these, people were laughing. It was that bad.
Actually, I'm not sure if anyone heard that. What I said, I realized I was on mute. When we start the meeting, I'm, I'm gonna mute everybody. And the trustees will talk first and then we'll open it up to the public. Okay? Um, so just to let you know, I am recording this and, okay, Dean is coming. So that way it keeps the recording nice and clean if we don't have anyone talking over anyone. So I'm gonna go ahead and mute people now.
Okay.
Can you hear us, Patty? We're in with Dean.
I hear you, Dean.
All right. Okay. All right. Can can we, Pat? Yeah. Know who all is in the meeting? Can we have a recitation of each of the people participating? And, you know, if, if anybody's here representing someone, that that's identified.
Okay, so I will go through one by one and unmute them and let them, um, speak to that.
Yeah, in other words, let's start, uh, I'm not asking you to, to tell us what you want us to know, but simply so we know who is who in this particular meeting. And by the way, let me, let me start though with the, the members of the board before we get to that. As, is Debbie Davis on the meeting? Let's make sure she's on the meeting so that she hears they're setting her up. First, I, I do want to apologize to everybody that we're having some technical difficulty, and that's why we got delayed started. And please let me know as soon as Debbie is ready because I want her to be able to hear who is here.
Okay, I don't see Debbie on yet, so. I've got you and Joe, though.
Okay. But I think for the benefit of everybody, she needs to be on, so she has a benefit of hearing who everybody is.
Right. Okay. Okay, Debbie is joining and give her just a second till her audio is up. I will unmute her. Okay. Trustee Davis is on. We have all three, Dean.
Okay, first of all, let me start by saying, um, that I'm calling this special meeting of the Board of Trustees for Springfield Township uh, to order. Uh, please indicate, uh, Trustee Davis, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Trustee DeLoro, are you present? Okay, I, I see your lips moving and I can see, can you hear us? Mr. DeLoro.
Okay, he, he is, he is.
And I'm Dean Young. I'm Chair of the Board. Let's go down through the list of who is participating. And I assume if you're participating, you have, you, uh, may wish to speak at an appropriate time.
Okay, I will go down my list of attendance if that's okay, Dean.
Okay.
Okay. The first, they, they move around, so bear with me here on the list. So I'll ask Carrie Jones to unmute and tell us, we know your name, but who you are here for or representing?
Hi, I'm just an intern with the Summit County Prosecutor's Office, just here for, for learning.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, Mr. Evans?
Yes, I'm with the Prosecutor's Office in the Civil Division. And we were asked to send a representative to possibly assist the trustees if they have any legal questions. So I'll be mostly lis- listening to, to my way of thinking, but we'll see what happens here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Karen? If you could unmute and tell us your address?
It's 2995 Albright Avenue, and I am a neighbor.
Okay.
Here's a quick question for Karen. Is your property immediately adjacent?
Yes.
Okay.
We're the ones that bought a big portion of that property four years ago. So we own quite a bit of that land now.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Kent Informal Group, can you unmute and let us know who you're with and?
Can we?
Roger Buzia, I'm the architect who presented the drawings for the reconstruction of the, of the project.
Okay, thank you. Charisse Sherfield? If you could unmute?
Um, I'm the owner of the property on Albright 3003.
Okay, thank you. See, who do we have?
Charisse, remind me your last name.
It's Sherfield.
Sherfield.
And then, um, Tyler Whitney?
Attorney Tyler Whitney, I represent Charisse Sherfield.
Thank you. All right, and, um, William Pittcock?
Yes, my name's Bill William Pittcock. My address is 1225 North Main Street, North Canton, Ohio 44720. And I'm an attorney who's representing Karen Crawford.
Okay, thank you. And I have a phone number here. I'll read it off. I don't know what, what the name is, 330-962-8614. If you could let us know who you are and.
This is Sylvia McGroby, 359 Kreiner Avenue. I'm adjacent to the property and next to Mrs. Crawford.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, first of all, in counting the number of people, uh, we have uh, up to seven. And what I would tell you is that we do have another meeting that will commence at 6 o'clock. And so I will ask any persons who are speaking, uh, to please be brief, uh, and, uh, to the point, uh, the Board of Trustees um, has received, of course, some emails from property owners. The board as a group has, has not met or deliberated or discussed this, uh, to make a specific decision. I was asked, uh, to interview Ms. Charisse and the architect. And, um, also, I think that the builder or contractor was also present in order to gain some additional information, which, uh, would, would help us in terms of understanding. Um, initially, this board entered a decision for demolition of the property at 3,003 Albright Avenue. Uh, in 2015, it was July 9 of 2015 that the board issued its order. Um, thereafter, the, the demolition did not proceed. Um, this, we, this board had acted based upon receiving from the Summit County Building Department a condemnation order dated April 15 of 2015. As I say, that the, um, demolition did not proceed for reasons uh, that do not at this point appear clear to the board. We don't know why. Um, there was not throughout the time period after our order to demolish the building, there was not a posting that continued at the premises. It appears as though the condemnation order, um, issued by the Summit County Building Department was not, um, put adequately put into the, the records of the building department because when the, uh, individuals who own the property that are Ms. Charisse or her contractor sought, uh, a permit to make some improvements to the property, they were not advised at that point that, that there had been a condemnation order. When, when that came to attention of the building department, uh, my understanding is Ms. Charisse was instructed that we had issued an order for demolition. And, um, at the point that, um, she was advised also by the building department that there could not be further work on the property until she came to Springfield Township. At contact with the zoning department of Springfield Township, a request was put before the Board of Zoning Appeals to grant a variance, a use variance for the property because the current zoning did not permit a four-unit structure. The, a four-unit structure had existed there historically. It was a, a condition, a, a non-conforming use because it, it, it was constructed prior to the time that zoning would have forbidden a four-unit structure. So it was a non-conforming use permitted. But when the use ceased for a long enough time period, that permission was terminated by operation of time, by the passage of time. So to permit the use to be resurrected would require a decision by the Board of Zoning Appeals for what's called a use variance. And our code has a specific guideline or criteria for use variance. It, it, it appears that there was not any, although the, the current purchaser, Sharice Sherfield, had obtained a title. That is through transfer of a warranty deed and had gone to a title company and was issued an owner's title policy. There was no reference in the owner's title policy to the either condemnation order or the order of demolition by the Township Zoning Department. And it, it might be said that we do not appear to have any record here of a title company seeking information from us prior to the issuance of title to Ms. Sherfield. The other thing that is of note to us is that at the time that Ms. Sherfield came to the zoning department, because she had been directed by reason of concern about zoning, that the zoning department did not advise her immediately of the previous order by the board to, to demolish the property. Instead, she was directed to file an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a use variance. That would tend to suggest that there was no order for demolition. So she was directed to the board, which the demolition order would have had to be dealt with prior to any additional work on the property. So that's what brings us here today. First of all, we, we have had, as I say, emails. I guess I would like to hear, oh, I should add one other fact that I think from my discussion. As, as one member of the board in meeting with the Ms. Sherfield and her contractor and also the architect, it appears that there has been plans submitted to the building department that detail the kind of improvements, both the foundation, but also an outline or diagram of, of the four units that would exist. The, the property owner in this case, who had indicated she had no knowledge of any demolition order, and, and I will say that because there was no posting, there, and also because no demolition was proceeded on, there was no filing in the records of deeds in the county so that someone would find that order unless they came to the Springfield Zoning Department and specifically ask about it. Ms. Sherfield purchased the property, I think for the sum of $41,000, is that correct, Ms. Sherfield?
I think it was like $48,000.
Okay, I think I have a copy of.
I thought it was $49,000.
Okay, I'll, I mean, I think that that's, I think that is right, that that was the amount of the guaranteed title. And that was what was stamped on the deed. In addition, there's been an expenditure for new siding and repair of the roof, is that correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Musia, what can you recite the amounts that have been expended in those two?
I, I did not, I was aware of it, something like $24,000 was expended to the property.
Okay, I have noted, it looks like $13,000 on the siding. Now, I'm only stating what was represented to me when I was asked to do some investigation for the board. $13,000 on the siding, $6,000 to repair to the roofs, and $2,500 is the estimated fees that have been incurred for architectural work. Does that sound right?
Sounds good to me, yeah.
Okay, so total expended by the property owner of about $67,500. Okay. And we start, and this is not to, all persons that are participating in the meeting will have the opportunity to speak, and initially I would ask that you try to limit yourself to three minutes at most. And Mr. Pittcock, do you wish to speak at this point? Or to have your client speak? And that, both will be given the opportunity.
Well, I'll speak now, and then Karen can clean up. Here's what it is, my clients are longtime homeowners in this area who knew that this property had been condemned and who bought a big chunk of the lot that, that had sat on as a non-conforming use with the expectation that it was going to be torn down. In reliance on that, they spent money that she'll be able to tell you how much to buy that lot. So now they only have, I think, on their conditional use, on their application for variance, they say she has .5308 acres. And she wants to put four units on it. Now, they went out and spent this money, but they did it without bothering to check the zoning, to see if this was even permitted or to, or to get the necessary permit for a variance or whatever was needed. So the idea that somehow that equitably they should be permitted to continue their, you know, to benefit from their failure to abide by the law just seems inappropriate. This is only a .53 acre parcel, and they want to put a four-unit apartment building on it now right up against the land that my folks bought with the understanding that the lot was going to be cleared. It's that simple. And for that reason, it seems useless to, it seems useless to get rid of the demolition order for a project that isn't going to be, that isn't going to be permitted. It doesn't meet the area requirement of, for instance, of one acre for a low intensity attached dwelling. It's commenced without any permits from the township or the Summit County Building Department. The, it's that simple. They went ahead and did all this without dotting their i's and crossing their t's, and it's come back to bite them. And it shouldn't bite my clients who also dotted their i's and crossed their t's when they purchased a big chunk of the lot on which this place used to sit. It's been condemned in 2015, my folks bought it in 2016, that, that part of the land in 2016. They ordered the building razed, it's in terrible condition. She does, is promising to spend some money in it, but it's for a use that is not permitted. And I don't see where it's even a conditionally permitted use out there. It, it's that simple, she's going for a variance. And that shouldn't be, she shouldn't be able to shoehorn her failure to abide by the requirements of getting permits into, oops, I spent a bunch of money and then use that as equitable reasons to be allowed to go forward with something that isn't permitted. And the people who live near, next to this place are absolutely beside themselves, especially the Crawfords, because they spent money to buy that land that used to be part of the parcel that this land is on. And it's now going to be, you know, right up against a four-unit apartment building in an area where those, those buildings are not permitted, period. That's it.
Okay, a couple of quick questions. The, how much, how large is the parcel that the Crawfords bought?
Well, Karen, can you tell me exactly?
I could ask these questions, why don't I ask Ms. Crawford? You have to unmute Karen Crawford.
It made our property up to a full acre, I, I would have to pull the paperwork out. I, I can pull the, we had it surveyed.
Okay, these, were, do, these two parcels were side by side and both of them fronted on Albrecht Avenue?
Correct.
Okay, and the parcel that you bought, is it to the east or to the west?
To the east.
And to face it, is it to the right or the left?
It's to the east.
Okay, and what use have you put that parcel to? Is it still?
There's a two and a half garage on it, and that's it. I mean, we might do things later down the road, I don't know, I mean, our house is right there. Our issue is those apartments are two-bedroom apartments. So that's at least one or two children per unit, plus the adults, plus all the cars. There is, there's no property for them there. I mean, between our property and their back porch, there's maybe 10.
About 20, 30 feet.
My husband says 20 or 30 feet. So I mean, they come out their back door, they take five or six steps, and they're on our property. You can, there's, you can barely drive a car up there. When there was people living in that apartment, they'd drive up, unload their groceries, and then they had half, more than half of the front facing Albrecht, facing north or south, that was their big parking lot. So they haven't, there's no space for them to park by their apartments, they would have to make a parking lot out front also. So that will cut down on the, the amount of space that they have for people. So our issue is it's just too many people for, that lot is 85 feet wide.
Is there, there's a fence line on this property on one side or the other, isn't there?
It's on the other side, it's between the apartment and the neighbor on the other side, on the east side. That's, they have a fence down there. There is no fence between our property and the apartment.
Okay. Anything else you want to say at this point?
I'm, I'm, I feel sorry for the lady, I mean, it, that thing has sat empty, we've had squatters in there, they ripped out everything, that thing is gutted. The found, there's, the wood's all termite and carpenter ant eat it underneath, half the cement blocks are gone. I don't know why they would put siding and a tin roof on it, when there's no foundation or anything.
Now, we also have on, on this particular meeting Sylvia McGroby. Sylvia McGroby is on, we have her phone number, I can't see her face, but Mrs. McGroby, I know that you've sent email, do you have something you want to say at this point? That you have to unmute her.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Where, where is your property in relation?
Okay, ours is, the back of our yard backs up to the apartment building and takes up like the length of the apartment building. And then there's the driveway in a tiny little space, and then our fence.
Are you on the west side, or are you saying you're on the north side of this property?
We're on the west side.
Okay, okay, and your property, there, there is a fence that separates your property from the property at issue?
Yes.
Okay. Is there more that you want to say?
We don't, that's too small, they'll be right up on top of everything. And I totally agree with everything that Karen has said. She basically said what I have, what I would say.
Okay. Mr. Whitney, you represent Sharice in this matter?
Yes, I do.
You have the floor.
Yes, I, you know, I keep hearing that, that Ms. Sherfield wants to put a, a four-unit there. She merely wants to use this property as it's, as it's been used, as a, as a four-unit. When she obviously purchased the property, she really, she has title insurance, she really has no indication that this property, there are issues there that she could not use it as a four-unit. She gets an architect, she gets a contractor. It's as soon as they start pulling permits to make the necessary repairs, is that when she finds out that there's issues in regards to the use and the demolition order. She spent a significant amount of money on this property, she has the plans and, and the the contractor, necessary repairs have, she wants to make this nice. It's not going to be a section property, it's gonna, it's maybe once rehabbed and if it can be, there's a month from each of the four units. It's an income property for her, she's trying to keep it nice. I, I just frankly don't see why the neighbors would oppose. I, I, they have their reasons, but she's going to beautify this neighborhood and, and make, you know, a, 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 something that's a blight on this neighborhood into a positive. With money and, and the effort that she's going to do to make the necessary repairs and rehab, she's not increasing the footprint. She's merely fixing the foundation is where they were going to start and then move up to the other issues. But she was going to redo the entire foundation. Obviously, if, if this council would, would let her do this, she would comply with zoning and everyone else, and, and, and she has the, the plans and, and the manpower in place to, to really make this something very nice for the neighborhood and, and for her, that she could rent and keep in a nice, 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 and keep nice. So she can explain to you what, what she plans there. And I, I think we have the architect, and I think you have the plans in regards to what was, I guess what the plan was as far as the repairs. I just hear that the neighbor has a problem that, that purchased a large, large chunk of this land from this parcel, you know, in, in 16. But it wasn't, was used as a four-unit apartment building in, in, in the past, and, and that's what Ms. Sherfield wants to use it as, and what frankly she expected to, to, to use it as when he went through with this purchase, not knowing about these issues. And having, you know, this was an arms-laden transaction with a title company and title insurance to make the repairs there, to, to not have a condemnation order to worry about, that, that she's going to make the repairs and, and with all, you know, the code and everything else, building in this area. And, and like I said, it's not going to be a section property, it's she's planning on keeping this very nice. We have the plan, place to do that. So I'd ask if you hear briefly from my client, Ms. Sherfield, and if you need anything else from the, the tractor or architect there to fill you in on that.
Mr. Pittcock, did you have a question or?
I just did want to point out that she's not returning this to its prior state because it's now on a much smaller lot. She did buy it, she was aware that it was zoned R3. And she was aware from just reviewing it that it obviously hadn't been used in many, many years. And so any status that it had as a pre-existing non-conforming use was gone. And she should have inquired then about the situation, and she absolutely did not. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. Before we get to Ms. Sherfield, do you, you can either speak now, Ms. Sherfield, or, or I would ask Roger Musia to speak. Mr. Musia?
Yes.
Yes. I was brought in kind of after the fact to, to repair the foundation. I started out as, this is a repair job, but not truly, I was ever hired as a master plan with the neighbors. I always thought it was an existing property being rehabilitated. I had submitted the drawings to Summit County, and I got a fax that said, stop, you know, stop work. And notified of the, of the condemnation. I could address the properties with, you know, we could, we could put a fence up and separate the neighbors. We can, we can solve issues with the parents. We can, we can, we can make this an attractive property. We have a thousand, what, eleven thousand square foot lot? That's, that's quite big. I'm, I'm curious that the person who caused all this, this, you know, this, this problem, you know, sold off, when they sold off the property, that should have triggered red flags when that property was subdivided with a parcel already on it that was not large enough to, to make, to exacerbate. That, that seems to be the first domino of this thing that should have been a red flag.
If I could speak to that very quickly, Mr. Young, the, the property that the Crawfords bought was a separate parcel. It was not split off.
Not joined?
No, it was, it was the same owner, but it was a separate parcel.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Sherfield? Do you want to speak?
I don't have much to say. I just want to get the property going, build it up, make it look nice for the community. And that's about it. I just want to do whatever needs to be done for me to be able to get my property up, that's it.
Okay. Do, do the members of the board have any questions at this juncture? Mrs. Davis?
He needs to unmute. Debbie, we can't hear you. You need to hit your unmute button or your lower left-hand corner.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Charisse, I just wanted to ask, do you have, do you own any other rental properties now? Or have you owned any in the past?
Yes, I own other rental properties.
Okay, you own them now?
Correct. I bought another property right around the same time, not, not too far out.
Okay, is it near this one?
No.
Okay, was it one that you had to put a bunch of work in also?
Some work, yeah.
Do you have any more questions?
That's all I have.
Mr. Delora, do you have any questions? Okay, anybody else have something that they have not already indicated to us? And they, they wish us to consider? This is Mrs. Crawford.
Just a minute. The only thing I want to add is, when they first bought that property, I went over and talked to them. And they had workers there like the next week, a bunch of them. And I kept watching, I didn't see any permits or anything going up on the windows. So I called down to the Summit County Building Department, and they were not aware of any of this, that they had not pulled any permits. And that's when the work stopped, and I was told by one of the workers that they were told to get an architect. That was my first red flag. And the second one was, the man that I spoke to told me the day that I met him that they wanted to put cheap apartments in there so families would have a decent place to live. And cheap apartments isn't twelve hundred dollars a month. I don't, I'm not a renter, so maybe that is a cheap apartment. I don't know. But there was just a bunch of red flags going up. The people they had working on it, I've talked to them. None of them were skilled labors. They were all-day laborers, that most of them were homeless. So that's, that's one of the concerns that we have, is how they started all this. Now all of a sudden, you know, oh, we're going to make it the Taj Mahal, so to speak. And it, and besides that fact, there is not enough room over there for that many people and kids. I'm sorry, there's just not. I mean, when it was, when that whole property was there and that apartment building was there, yeah. And they went over and played on our, on the property that at the time they owned. They, there wasn't a problem with that. But there's, there's absolutely, I'm sorry, there's no room for that many kids and that many adults. There's just not. I don't care how nice it is, it's just... I, to me, it will not, to me, I don't believe it would, I don't care how nice they are. It will not add to the community that we have over here, just mainly before, because it's so crowded. And even a fence, I was told after the building, we, you could, you only allow a four-foot fence from the building down pat the rest of our property. Well, that's not going to help any. In a fence, you know, that's fine, but that doesn't stop a lot of things. So that's, that's just our concern. It's just from, from day one, it, just the way they started it, and they hadn't pulled any permits, nobody knew anything about it. And, and that's, that's when it got stopped, is when I called down to the Summit. If I hadn't have called, I don't know how far they would have gotten on fixing it up.
Okay, anybody else? This is a matter that, that needs to be decided. This, this I think is, presents an issue that's been one of the hardest for us to find and, and feel certain of, of where all the equities, which side all the equities fall on. I've been sitting here writing down what I think is... Is, I don't know, is somebody trying to speak? I don't want to cut anybody off here.
Hello, this is 359 Kryner.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to mention that if this was a reputable contractor, he would have brought generators with him because there was no power to the building. Instead, they asked to hook into our power with extension cords. And said, oh, we'll pay you. I haven't heard a thing since then. But I mean, if a contractor is a good, reliable contractor, they come to the job site prepared.
Okay. Let me go back to, I'm going to, I'm going to present a motion, and if it has at least a majority of the board here, it will pass. The first thing is, as I was saying, this is a very difficult one to determine, balancing the equities where, where the, doing absolutely the right thing is dictated. Let me start by saying, I don't know why the demolition order was not carried out in 2015. I do recall from looking at the records what the concern of this board was. And I'm looking now at the condemnation order that was issued April 15, 2015 by Summit County Building Department. And if, if any of the people involved do not have a copy of the order, we will gladly provide it. But I want to read to you what our concern was then, and is still our concern. The structure is a two-story, four-unit apartment building with wood framing and asphalt shingle roof. There appears to be serious issues with the foundation, including rotted floor joists, a beam that was added to support a portion of the floor joists that appear to have termite damage and are rotted. The beam is supported by two adjust-a-posts that are just sitting on the ground with no footer supporting them. Now, that is still a concern. Let me say that there's plenty of fault kind of to pass around here in terms of why this building wasn't demolished. There should have been something by the building department that immediately notified of this problem. When there was, the, the property owner was chased into the building department to get a permit. There should have been something that, that came up when initial contact with the zoning department. This, this really was not the final, the finest hour of either Summit County or Springfield Township. In addition, the purchaser here should have come to zoning or building department initially. And I think that they, they were chased into the building department after property owners adjacent indicated that something was going on and there were no permits. Be all those things as it may be, I kind of feel like we have to look at this considering the condition of the property presently, and considering the general policy that this board has. When there's a condition of property that results in a condemnation order, our first step is to order the property owner to either cure the problem or it will be subject to demolition. We do tend to feel that property should be put in a habitable condition so that it is, it is something that is a tax-paying property for the township. However, in this particular case, a four-unit, even if this is put in habitable condition, it still has to abide by our zoning regulations. And in order to abide by the zoning regulations, the property owner would have to obtain a use variance. So I would be in a position to say that, that the order for demolition would be rescinded, but only based upon two strong conditions. And I'm on it, I'm sitting here writing it. It is, this particular decision, if, if the board would approve it, the trustees would approve it, does not guarantee that the property owner will be able to proceed because the, there's two very important issues. So this would be my motion. The Board of Trustees' previous order for demolition of the property at 3003 Albright Avenue in Akron, Ohio, which I believe to be parcel 51-04873, which was entered on July 9, 2015, as our resolution numbered 178-15, shall be rescinded on the following conditions, to be satisfied within the next ninety days unless additional time is granted for good cause by this board. Now, these are the conditions, and they're not a foregone conclusion. Condition one is that the property owner obtains a use variance by decision of the Springfield Township Board of Zoning Appeals for the use proposed for 3000 Albright. And number two condition, that there be full compliance with all applicable Summit County building codes, including permits when required for the proposed rehabilitation or remodeling of the property, and specifically that the plan for repair or replacement of the foundation, including all structures, meet the approval of the Summit County Building Department to deal with the original issues cited in the condemnation building order of April 15, 2015, and to guarantee the structural stability of the property as determined by the Summit County Building Department.
Mr. Young, there's one more variance needed, and that's the area variance for the small lot. The, the lot that doesn't meet our code. So there's a use variance and an area variance needed.
Okay, I would add that to the motion. And that, the Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of five residents of the township. I think there's a, there's an argument based upon how this all occurred, that there could be a colorable argument for those variances. But I, but the, the standards are found in our code. And it, I, I would not say it will be an easy lift. That's my motion. Do I have any member of the board that would second that motion? I think you have to be unmuted, Mr. Delora.
Yeah.
I, I don't hear.
I, I don't, I, he's unmuted, but we don't hear him. Not sure why.
Okay, I see his, Mr. Delora, are you indicating you second the motion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mrs. Ryan, do you want to call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
No.
Mr. Delaro? Mr. Young?
Yes. I'm not sure that this entirely solves the problem. The, the motion will be typed and will be available to everybody that participated. There is a hearing set before, I would suggest that, that we continue with the hearing in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals before you get more money involved in this property. Secondly, I want to say that, that the condition of the property that was identified is a serious one. And, and my motion says that, that there are concern with the foundation. The structural stability of that has to be guaranteed. And we will have to receive written confirmation of both of those actions being taken before the demolition order is rescinded. Any questions? We'll have, Mrs. Ryan, you'll have a copy of this that you can supply to the individuals that have contacted you.
Okay.
Mr. Whitney, was there any further question?
No further questions.
Okay.
I had a question.
Okay, Charisse?
So do the ninety days start out now, or do it start out after the February 10th zoning appeal?
They start now, but as I added to this, that unless additional time is granted, I mean, if... I mean, first of all, I think that the first step with the Board of Zoning Appeals is not a foregone conclusion. It, I mean, you have to look at the resolution. And I think there certainly is a colorable argument. At the same time, they, there has to be compliance with those requirements. So you have to direct your argument there. If the zoning board of appeals has a negative result, then, then you have, you have a loss to sustain.
Charisse, you and I will talk tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, I wish every- Okay, I wish everyone good luck on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would say that the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to, did you want to see me? Or you're just being friendly?
You want me to close this, Dean, or?
Yeah, I think you should. The, the meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Good night.
Good night.